Page one twenty-nine, additional appropriation.
So moved, second.
Fred?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Page one thirty, advance back.
So moved, second.
Tim?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Page one thirty-one, release the phones for J and Gus.
So moved, second.
Joe?
Yes.
Tim?
And.
Fred?
Yes.
Um, the one undersigned is under review by the prosecutors, so more of that one.
And the second one there, I've got a pending call to Amber Conrad, I want to talk to her first before we do that one.
Okay, and you can ask, I think that's a, that might be a yearly thing, we have contracts that we sign with each of those entities.
That's what I wanted to understand, is this a name, is this something new?
I'm, I'm almost certain we've done it with this company before, we'll get multiple of those, I think it's like the, um, four E.
Oh, is it? Okay, I'll tell you what, let's do it this way, can I just double check with Deb real quick?
Yeah, sure.
And let's do it this way, if it is consistent with what we've done before, then that makes sense. Okay, it is a continuation of what we've done past practices for.
Okay, so we have a CSEA and an eight twenty-one consulting agreement to sign, um, I believe that's at least one, all of you, okay.
So, so moved.
Second, motion to sign.
Fred?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Deb and I did have a video conference call yesterday with Netpoint Consulting for the website, and he told, we, uh, he worked out some issues that we were having on our particular portion of the website, um, we were able to get January's minutes uploaded.
Okay.
Um, we had all the links there, as of yesterday afternoon, the links wouldn't, I don't know, whatever he said, there's something, the link's there, we click it, it doesn't go to anything, but, so they were troubleshooting that, um, but Deb and I were able to get all of January on, so we'll work on that the rest of the week and get it updated.
This signed sheet, I won't put it right now in front of you, right? Fred, brush. Okay, just one second, I'll be right here in a second.
Thank you.
Okay.
There, we, we're sorry, some.
Shrek him. Except he finally wants to be a showman, since he's been with us his whole life. Wasn't he, maybe? We had two corrupted people, so there's a resolution, that means re-sign.
Okay.
You had already signed that.
I already signed it, thank you.
Okay.
Those are just a little bit more sturdy than the other ones.
Yes, you are.
You mind if I?
Yeah.
You can do what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay.
And any other ones that we have? I don't think there's, well, there was another one.
There was?
A couple of those.
That's me, you're coming.
No. The work's usually not only the, um, three or on Wednesday, right?
Either Wednesday, either Wednesday afternoon, or, you know, the one time you guys said Thursday morning.
But that's just as Catholic. That's why I came here, because I wanted to.
Both of these, you have summoned, but you didn't hear the thirty of. So, remarked your absent.
Thank you.
And now they just need to resign it. That's okay, I didn't put it down like that, so. There you go.
I also sent you an email, I got a, uh, a photo to you. And, uh, it was, remember the Northwest Ohio.
No, I don't know when I go.
To remember that, but there's more information coming through from Corning here.
Uh.
So, to distribute it to our, uh, judges, continue the obscure, you know, that whole.
I understand.
Yep.
No, schedule one.
Whatever is there on the.
I would take out what's going on.
Okay.
Uh, probably Friday, or you and Friday. Uh, she's getting one, yes. Okay, I think she's there at ten o'clock. That's probably what they called about yesterday. Yeah, I think I was with her and called for. Yep, so she's scheduled for a perm, but she can do one too. Okay, thank you. Yep, bye-bye. This is my afternoon.
Um.
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 Wow, I haven't been down here. Smell, did you get that smell?
Uh, uh, yeah.
Wow, that's nice to go, that's open, you know, office.
Oh, they're kind of low.
It's not bad.
See what you started?
I think it will look nice, paint that panel, you get new, one of these or that?
I, a hundred percent agree with you.
Well, we talked to commissioners about how we're in here.
I think we have the, like, only all of us now, because I can't.
We can't use it, other than everybody will transition that.
Right. I think wallpaper's the cool thing now, isn't it? We could wallpaper.
Hey, guys. More to look into that.
Oh, you're doing this?
Sorry, I wanted to speak about this.
I'm doing all that, you see, company.
How's it going? Good.
Morning.
Morning.
How are you? Well, we got a couple things today to talk about. One, might as well do this, folks, county maps. Talk about this a little bit. Third, end of the year, so. We typically do, try to do this every four years, catching the updates, and also in the past, well, last time, we put the commissioners' names on it as well. So, every county is a little different. Um, there's a little bit of advertising for, for commissioners, so. Of course, um, last time I asked the commissioners to, to help pay for, um, as well, so. Kind of you guys, we got a couple things going on, um, one is the Marion-Hart County line we're working at.
Yeah.
Getting that changed, so we'll obviously want to get that taken, it's not taken care of yet, but we're wanting to get that taken care of before we do any of this math, of course.
Right.
So I guess today is just kind of to bring it up, kind of get your guys' feedback on it, um, if you want to, if you want to go in again with our office, um, and have the names on the map, we can do that again.
Yeah, we might, you know, we've always done it before, so it makes sense to keep it going.
Uh, there's a couple different options on this, uh, we, we can start working on some of this until we get the county line figured out, so, a few things. I brought them back from last year, I don't know if you, you, if you had one or used one or, or whatever, but they were a little, uh, the paper was a little thin and a little difficult to use, and they wanted to rip. So, one of the options we've got there on the paper, um, on the, on the handout, would be, um, the sixty pound is what we got, um, last year.
Correct.
Um, the seventy pound, he brought some, some options for it.
What are you guys just looking for?
It's glossy and it's a little heavier paper, i- if you're going to, to, to use. Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, it's quite a bit different.
It comes, it comes with a little bit of a cost, but really not much, um, we've got it broke up there, cost per, um, cost per map, depending on how many we get made, so. Last time we did two thousand, um, we've probably got, and that was, of course, fu- four years ago, we've, we've probably got five hundred left.
At least, yeah.
So, we could go back to the fifteen hundred, but if you look at the, at the cost per map. So, we could go back to the fifteen hundred, but if you look at the, at the cost per map, um, you know, maybe we do the two thousand again. I, I don't know, I, I mean, I'm sure that's.
You know, I, I guess I looked at the sixty versus seventy, two thousand.
Yeah.
And we're only talking three cents.
Right, that's, that's kind of my thought, too, so, we, we were kind of, I guess my opinion would be go with the seventy pound, because they're glossy, they're a little heavier paper, a little easier to use, um, and then the two thou- we're kind of looking at the two thousand again, you know, we have some left.
How many did you say you had left from last year?
We've probably got five.
Five hundred and seventy, yeah.
Yeah, so we could go back to the fifteen hundred if you wanted, um, you know, one of the things, I was thinking, maybe we ought to make them more available, like at trade shows or the fair and stuff, um, just for the public to, you know, we could probably use those up if we wanted to use them, but, so, I mean.
You know, I would agree, if you, if you, if you have a use for the other five hundred, you could see doing a few extra things to use that up, as well, two thousand.
Yeah, okay. In all truthfulness, it's only gonna be a little over shy four hundred to do.
Right.
Two thousand, and I just.
Yeah.
For the money, for just more to do that, I would say.
Okay.
Um, the other thing, and we were gonna, we want feedback from you guys on, we've got some pictures in, in here, of course, the, the logo, which I, I figured we'd just stick with that, um, the biggest thing is the, the pictures from the community, um, we were going to get with, um, Holly's office, the chamber, to see if they had any, um, anything they would like to change out or add to that, um, but if you guys want to look at it, and any recommendations on, on change. Actually, I can just rip this.
Uh, see, you just ripped that?
I ripped this one trying to open it, so that, that was the problem with these older ones, but, um, we got a picture of the courthouse on it, and then we got pictures from the community.
Yeah, there are community pictures that were put on after. So there's room for about four or five pictures there, so we could update those pictures.
Or we can, or we can stick with them.
Or we can stick with them, and then on the back again, we have pictures of the courthouse, where I said, I would imagine we'll want to keep that with the commissioners' names and.
Yeah.
All the other stuff, and, so, all things we can talk about and change if.
But, in the meantime, I think we'll go ahead and reach out to her office to see if they have any recommendations, I guess if you guys, you guys want to look at it, um, you have any, and you'd like to see all that getting changed, now's the, now's the time to, to do that.
Change it over, or maybe.
Yes, yeah, we'll make sure, yeah.
I love changing all the changes.
Um, as far as county line, any kind of, so, it's got a little angle in it now, I don't know if you guys, if I talked to you about this or not, it's, uh, it's the Marion-Harden County line, cleared out of the, the south, the southeast corner, of course, Brad's been kind of working on it, um, we've been waiting on Marion County engineer. From, from my previous discussions with him, is he, he agreed, um, that it, it should be straight in that angle, so we're going to pick up a little more ground, it looks like, I'm not heard from him, uh, because of the, the holiday and the first of the year, um, stuff, but I'm going to a conference Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, uh, with county engineers, and he will be there, so I was going to touch base with him again, um, to see, to see where he's at, I guess, on our contract, so, hopefully we can get.
I remember building a new map and, well.
Yeah, yeah.
Want to get it right.
Yeah, so I, I'm gonna, I, I really don't, I haven't talked to him about it, but I will, I will hear the next day or two, so, um, Brad was planning on filing something in court, maybe he did, you thought?
I believe he did, we need to follow up with him on that.
So follow up with the office as well, so, yeah. So, that's all I had, you guys got any questions or comments on that, or, I mean, I don't, I don't know if we need to formally do something today, or, or if we just kind of plan on doing.
This quote is good for thirty days, so it depends on, um, how long it takes us to work out the county boundary thing.
That's the one.
So, this quote could change, so you may want to wait till we get that worked out.
Let, let me have discussion with Marion and then the prosecutor's office, and see about where we're at on that, and I guess we're just.
And then go from there.
Yeah, but you guys, you guys are thinking seventy pound or?
We're thinking seventy pound, and, uh, because you're going to have some extra activity to distribute, to, to go ahead and go with two thousand.
Okay, and then we will start working on the, the pictures and stuff, and you got them to get in that stuff up there.
What was the split before, or?
We did fifty-fifty before, so, I mean, if you guys are okay, uh, just splitting with you, we do charge some for them, um, when, when people come into office, I don't, I don't even know what we're charging.
Uh, two dollars a piece.
Yeah, so we're not getting our money back, but we are getting a little money back in, um, so, yeah.
Good.
Um, the other thing I got is, uh, landfill, uh, C E C is our consultant that we use to do our testing and stuff over there, so, uh, Nick usually comes in for the Christmas party, but his son unexpectedly passed away, like in November, December, so he was dealing with all that, so he didn't make it in, so we are, we, we always sign and agree with them, they do, of course, our testing, um, our groundwater testing, which we've got reduced just once a year now, and they do our gas, we have to test our gas wells a couple times a year, um, and then those reports are all sent to the EPA. I've got an updated agreement here, um, I, I'm pulling, pulling apart one, unfortunately, but I'll just give you a little bit of rundown, so, um, the agreement I have for twenty twenty-four versus their agreement for twenty twenty-five, um, in twenty twenty-four, the agreement was for forty-two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, um, ten thousand of that was contingency activities, and we didn't use those, um, and then this year, for twenty twenty-five, it was four, it's forty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, um, the, the sampling, um, is same money, pretty much, um, uh, there's another. Seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars is what it was for twenty twenty-four, seventeen thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars for twenty-five, so it's pretty much the same, uh, we've got a line item in there for, um, their annual report, it was five thousand last year, for twenty-five, it'd be five thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, so pretty much the same. So, we've been talking about this thirty-year post-closure, I don't know if you were involved in those meetings, um, so we're, we've got an agreement with the EPA of how we handle our testing, um, and that, that's what we do for our groundwater monitoring, we have to do that yearly, well, we, our agreement is, 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 um, going to end, it's been thirty years since we signed this agreement. We're one of the few counties, like, in this situation, where at the end of that agreement, so we have to, um, come up with a new plan of action with the EPA. So we thought, some of our discussions was to, um, not monitor anymore, they're going to make us do some monitoring, um, another thing is we're, we're pumping out, uh, big shake out of the landfill now, we looked at, um, maybe not doing that anymore, but I think we're going to have to continue doing that, but I, I guess, that, that line item, the ten thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars is, is, then we're going to work with us and the EPA to come up with this agreement.
Okay.
Going forward.
Okay.
Um, and then we've got the gas monitoring, last year was three thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, this year is three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, and then ten thousand for any contingency projects.
System with both years.
So, pretty much, yeah, last year forty-two, like I said, forty-two, six forty, this year's forty, forty-six, eight sixty, most of that increase is that, um, thirty-year post closure, getting that agreement done, so, if you guys are okay with that, I don't remember in the past, if they just pass a resolution.
They can pass a, a resolution.
And then I signed it, I signed the agreement.
So do I hear a motion to enter an agreement that Luke has provided for C E C for the, uh, calendar year twenty-five?
So, Luke's recommendation, second.
Brad?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
C E C was willing to come down and meet with you, I didn't seem to need, I mean, they charged you to come down here, so I thought we'd get handled it, um, so if you guys want any type of feedback from them, they're willing to do it, or, um, phone call or, or whatever, but it's pretty straightforward from what we've been doing. Um, as far as, we, we are planning to meet here this first quarter with the EPA to kind of go over how we're going to proceed in the future, they are looking at allowing us to quit monitoring of some of the wells, um, going forward, because we haven't had any hits in those wells, the groundwater wells, so that seventeen thousand that we pay a year, attention is going to come down.
Okay.
Um, going to the future, but we can, we'll, we'll talk about that when we come into that meeting with the EPA, which is going to be good for taxpayers, um, yeah, so, that's all I had, uh, transfer station, we, we got a new roll-off coming, we're going to get rid of, um, the Volvo and one of the old Max, uh, looking, looking at this year, so. We're going to have to have a discussion, right now, our tipping fees up there aren't covering our fees, um, to dispose of the, but we, we do have that tax on, um, you know, that all taxpayers are paying for, and it's helping to cover the difference, so, we're going to have to maybe look at that here in the future, I'm putting all that stuff together and bringing the district in, we'll have a meeting, to see how we as a county want to, and the district, of course, gets the same, too, but how we want to proceed here in the future, if we want to start raising tipping fees to, to help cover that gap, and then maybe look at, um, reducing that tax that we're collecting.
So, do you recall, when's the last time they were re-increased?
So, we were, so our tipping fees, we got an agreement with Cherokee, when I say we, the district actually has the agreement with Cherokee, and that's been increasing per year, and it's just built into, we, they signed a five-year agreement with Cherokee, um, we, as the commissioners, they had a resolution passed that those are tipping fees, and then here locally, were increasing, but that resolution, um, it only, it only was for five years, so it's not been increasing any last year, for sure, that we didn't have an increase, so.
For the last year, for sure.
Yeah, okay, we've got, so the thing I struggle with, um, with, with the tipping fees out here, is we've got money out there, so, but some of that is because of the tax we're collecting on property taxes, so, it's going to have to kind of be, i- if we raise our tipping fees, we're going to have to also look at that tax, and I don't remember when that, um, that property tax, I don't remember then, when that comes back up for renewal, so, we'll have to kind of, those will have to work together, so. Because I, I don't really see a reason to charge ti- more tipping fees to, um, you know, the people that are using it, because we've got money.
That makes sense, well, that makes sense.
Has that been a year in?
I think so. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
You guys get it?
I'm finishing up my annual report for the, for the engineering office, uh, this is the first time doing one, but I want to send it up for you guys, I'll send it up for you guys, if you've got what you've done, just kind of a snapshot of what we did last year, as far as road projects, bridge projects.
Okay, good.
So.
We have a landfill burn?
Yes, yep, that's all finished, it's, it's working great, so, uh, thanks.
Good.
It's been great, so.
We have heard great feedback from you guys for doing care, taking care of the snow and the western.
Good.
So, kind of, whoever's doing it.
Yep.
Please.
Yep.
Tell them they're doing an awesome job.
Yeah.
We need a lot of positive feedback.
Good. We, um, I, we're, we're getting the January billing around, of course, we spent, uh, more time up there in January, but if, if you see something you don't like on that, don't hesitate to let me know, so, I will work with you on it, too, but, and then I, yeah, I don't know, we're, we're kind of, we're kind of early here, but I, I'd like to maybe set down, um, here, maybe March, to see what you're thinking next year, because, yeah, we're going to maybe redo a couple things if we're going to continue to do it, so. March, April, whatever, yeah, we're looking at switching some equipment around, pickup trucks mostly, um, and we may keep a spare one if we're going to continue to do that for you guys, so, but. Good?
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay.
Very good.
Yep, I will leave a copy of this agreement with.
With the girls out here, too.
All right.
Yeah, thank you. Well, how's it going?
Good.
Good?
Good.
So, what it looks like?
I've got my chair broken.
He's got a little thing.
Yeah. Okay.
Hey, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you.
We've been dealing with truck traffic up north of town.
I love going with it.
Kind of mess, and I was spent, yeah, all last week putting stop signs up and everything else.
Did you guys put the barricades, or?
No, no. We don't want my name tagged on me, that's. We did, um, so the northbound traffic, well, soon as they get out of town, they were turning on the side road, township, county, whatever, and we had trucks stuck up there in the ditch, because they can't make the turns in them once they get, and the further north they go, those roads don't go.
Right.
They're all, so, we had a lot of problems with that, of course, run over stop signs, getting stuck in, they were stuck in ditches and everything else up there, so, we, we're working on signage to try to, in the northbound traffic, keep them on fifty-three, they get they want, and we put a bunch of those truck signs and everything else up there, so.
I saw the signs out on three and nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, we've done well and advanced, working, you know.
Yeah, but a lot of them are just, um, I mean, it's not local traffic, it's not local trucks, a lot of them are just disregarding the signage and driving to the, whi- which, I mean, we see that all the time, on any type of, on, sort of, cause you respect, yeah, just driving to the left, so they can't drive anymore when you try to turn.
I like, was it one eighty a couple years ago?
Yeah.
I remember it, took a freaking beat.
Yeah, one eighty and one ninety, and they had them thirty-one close, yeah. And then the southbound traffic, we kind of talked to the township and, and letting a car across one fourteen, when they get cleared out at that point, and don't, don't use any of the other detours, there's been, you know, by the time they lit it up, one of those two detours that they, they drove past, but, yeah, uh, it's going to be a work in progress.
Yeah.
Do I need bilingual signs?
Yeah. We, I went out Friday night, kind of first stop sign, and there was trucks stuck, many were trying to get them out, and while, while we were trying to get them out, five other trucks came up, and we set them on.
Truck, very weird.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good business, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good busy. Okay, well, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Luke.
See you next. What do you want? I didn't know. Living, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
How's things been? Ridgeway.
That's everything on the agenda today. That's everything we have on the agenda today.
Well, guys, I think we're clear for today. All right, okay. Thank you, Jordan.
Yeah.
Hey, Toby. So I just sent, I sent a record request for the cost allocation plan.
Mm-hmm.
But then I realized I have this email. I don't have that. I don't, it doesn't say anything, so now I'm confused, cause I have like this. Which is just my request and then this, so now, so.
So there's nothing attached though, well, I just forwarded the electronic, it's like a hundred and seven pages, I just, when I went back there, I saw your email, so I forwarded my electronic version to Katie. So hopefully, maybe last time she just sent it to me, and she just attached the opinions, yeah.
Yeah, cause I, I, that's what I remember, that I was like, it wasn't the actual thing, so anyway, sorry if I.
Yeah, no, it's, um, cause I thought you had asked for it before as well, but, um, I did not see.
Let me make, let me see. Anyways, trying to keep it all straight.
Yeah, it looks like the opinions are the only things that catch.
Okay.
You, no, cause it is, it's a hundred and seven pages, so it's.
Right. Okay, well, good, I just didn't wanna be like, you already got it, and I'd be like, I'm sorry, sorry.
That's what we're missing from it. Do you, do you, is your son or your nephew just took over for the US Department of Commerce?
Commissioners, they were, not much.
Not much. Yeah, do you have an ever-bowl contract for private services? Yes. Marshall's and, and Forrest's. How's that work? State of the Month, or time of the month? Montrose, State of the Year, the East Side, two fifteen, State of the Year, the North, or the West Side?
I see.
Reason why you ask. I have one with the girls. I have some girl partners. Throwing, then. You have a policy that, or a, or a.
Would you like to add?
I don't know.
Yeah. Our schedule. We have a lot of. Then you would have been all the. You wanna do this, uh, this, she's in Porsche. So they can trade up a good thing.
God, I don't know where it went.
She would have said.
Oh, I, I can walk the signs. Yeah, we have a hard.
Do I know a mask?
You must still want a truck. I don't know how to do that, I don't, I don't know if I've ever still been on, I don't know, I never, I don't know. I'm pretty certain he's president. I wish.
Okay, all right.
I mean that. Um, I did try to set a bar, I just don't know, it's a reasonable, I should sometimes weigh our bar, thirty dollar head budget. Um, but, it's only a hundred dollars, we paid for bar, it's a, it's a. Um, talk to, now chill. I'll go not to a bar. Cause it won't be worth it again, but he said it'll still be, somebody's gonna help you with that. So we're gonna move. Well. But I tried. What they do. Oh, we're gone. So how? I'll send her. I'll send her to keep it out, I'm sure it's still alive. Yeah, I, I totally believe that. All right, see you. Yes.